We can begin, we have a short period of time, an hour. We'd like to get in as many questions as we can. I know that people are coming in, so please do come in and take a seat. But we're going to begin. Welcome to 2023 Shorewood Voters Forum. And thank you for joining us today. My name is Gail Gold, and I serve on the Board of Shorewood Women's Club. I would like to thank the League of Voters, all the facilities in this forum. Our three members have been part of both the class closure and their faultless court event, and the staff from the Shorewood Library and City Year User Center, for welcoming us back to the space through their generous effort. Shorewood Women's Club has been an active member of the community for more than eighty-six years. We are a strong and active group of over fifty women of all ages from all over the metro area. We are an organization dedicated to improving the community by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. We are also a social group with many events throughout the year designed to help each other. Club members are extremely generous with their time and talents. And in addition to hosting events of excellence every month for our meetings, our group tries to help our community in various ways. Besides funding for college scholarships and handling members' supplies for any children and growing towards our overall national organization. This could be do, they can do. We regularly contribute to the NSO, the Kid Trip Community Center, the Milwaukee Rescue Mission, the Franciscan Peacemakers, and the Eisenhower Center, among other groups. So if any of you have any questions or would like to join up at Shorewood Women's Club, please feel free to ask anything you might have to help with. As members of our national organization, the General Federation of Women's Clubs, we regularly try to be involved in community service programs, and thus we are most happy to host this afternoon's forum. Thank you. I was told I had a big voice. And I'm still supposed to wear this, okay. Welcome to the candidate forum for the Shorewood Village Board of Trustees. Thank you to our sponsor, the Shorewood Women's Club. My name is Roz Punatore, and I am a volunteer with the League of Women Voters. I will be your forum moderator today. I am joined by other volunteers from the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County who help run the forum. We have a timer. She's up here. Are you doing this all by yourself? Okay. And we have volunteer women leaders in the back. So if you have questions or you can't hear, please tell them, they'll signal to me. The League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan membership organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. As a nonpartisan group, the League never endorses a political party or a candidate. It is important to be an educated voter, so we thank you for coming and taking time to learn about the candidates. We also welcome you to join the League Women of Voters, the League of Women Voters, which despite its name, also includes men as members. Questions for this candidate forum event were submitted prior to the forum by voters of Shorewood community. Thank you to everyone who submitted questions. We had numerous submissions, and so the League looked at them, codified them, and came up with ten questions that we will try to have answered today. I hope your concerns are in these ten questions. Before we start, please take your opportunity to silence your cell phones. We also ask the audience to refrain from clapping, cheering, or other demonstrations of support for or against a candidate. Thank you for your cooperation. Today's candidate forum will be recorded and posted to the Shorewood Women's Club YouTube channel. A link will be posted to vote for online. Three candidates are seeking election for two positions on the Shorewood Board of Trustees. On the ballot are Arthur Gerzink, Sam Ashner, Kathy Stoltren. The candidates have chosen to be addressed by their first names. Thank you so much. We will, and they also chose how they would begin. So Kathy chose one, Sam is two, and Arthur is three, and that's only two at the beginning. So we will begin with a two-minute opening statement from each candidate, followed by questions with one and a half minutes allowed for each answer. Then, at the end, there will be a two-minute closing remarks. So you already know how they're going to start. The questions will rotate, so each candidate will get a chance to be the first one to answer a question, and so forth and so on. We have a timer, and she has three cards. They are a thirty-minute, thirty-second notification. You don't have thirty minutes, sorry. Thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and then time's up, stop. Let's begin with the opening statements. As I said, the first speaker was selected by random draw in two minutes or less. Please share your opening comments. We begin with Kathy.
Yes, one, two, three, how's that in the back row? Okay, and there are still two seats up front, so someone should take them. Thank you to the Shorewood Women's Club and the League of Women Voters. Also, thank you in advance to the staff and the poll workers here in the village. Your role is critical to the democratic process. I seek a second term on the Village Board of Trustees because of the need for continuity. There has been significant turnover. There is also a persistent need for an advocate for transparency, accountability, and oversight. We live in a local news desert requiring municipal governments to be more aggressive with communication. I am a tireless advocate for this at all levels of government, with staff, committees, elected officials, and residents. This has also been a unique transition time for municipal government that I would like to see us follow through on, moving from a year of all virtual meetings in 2020 to the current hybrid arrangement, which continues to be an operational challenge. As we come out of the pandemic, it's time to focus on health, safety, and infrastructure. The village continues to deal with aging systems. We need to complete our sewer system improvements after the flood of 2010. Continue removing lead from the water utility. Develop a plan to replace residential streetlights and update or relocate the public works operation. Finally, oversight and input will be needed as we rebuild Lake Drive in 2025 and North Oakland Avenue in 2026. As budget and finance chair for the last two years, I can provide continuity, especially because we are getting a new finance director and treasurer beginning tomorrow, for the first time in nearly ten years. My experience as a journalist, including covering municipal government, has prepared me for the role of trustee. I seek input, listen, learn, attend meetings, come prepared, and ask questions on behalf of the residents. It's important to look for areas to bring groups together to solve problems within the village and neighboring jurisdictions. I support the inclusion of environmental and equity concerns in decision-making. I will continue to provide engaged and experienced representation on the village board. I ask for your support. Thank you.
We are not being rude, although they seem like we are rude. But what we need is everyone to have a chance to talk. They have the same timeframe to talk, and I'll let you complete a thought, but I will stop you if you go on. So please cooperate, so we all can get through this with a lot of information. The second person to go is Sam. And Sam, I think what we learned from Kathy is that it might have just been more closely.
Can you hear me? Hi, hi all, I'm a new guy here, so let me introduce myself a little bit. My name is Sam Harsher. I have a kind of a complicated career of fifteen years as a public servant for both the state and federal government. In the last seven years, I've been head the honor of teaching at Marquette Political Science and History Department students there, and I've been really enjoying it. So the question, why the hell am I doing this, right? Why do I have a love for punishment in this case? I think it's because primarily we have a crisis in democracy in the state, and I think that's something a lot of people recognize. Something that has to be addressed by deepening democracy from the ground level on up. We have a hopeless CDR in our state that gives us one-party rule. We have a state legislature that's pulling back on shared revenue, on school aids, making governing at the local level extremely difficult. We have limited levers to the bulk, right? So we have authority over regulatory, we have regulatory authority, we have zoning authority, we have authority over economic developments, right? I want to make sure that we're using these tools, right, in ways that are not just about building and tax base, but are also consonant with the values of this community, right? The values, the progressive values of this community, including things like creating good jobs, things like creating affordable housing, things like equity, sustainability, and making sure that tenants have rights to their community. You know, half of our community is righteous. So I hope to be able to elaborate this idea of a high road policy of economic development over the course of this forum here today, but I will stop there.
Timer, are you ready?
First of all, I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters from Milwaukee County, as well as Shorewood Women's Club for hosting this event. I also want to say thank you to Kathy and Sam for deciding to run. It's extremely important that this village sees that kind of level of civic engagement. The first time Kathy and I ran, it was unopposed. And, you know, for a community that's engaged as Shorewood is, it's great to be able to have somebody like Sam kind of join us up here to be able to go through this process. We've seen this on so many of our boards over the last three, five years, where we're not getting the attendance, we're not getting the engagement that we need. Shorewood has an incredible amount of just brilliant people in our community that are very engaged, that have a lot of big ideas, but we don't see that translated within our local government. And it's nice to see Sam up here with us and went through this process. And I, you know, and I also want to say I really appreciate everybody that's here today. That's the next step, is public engagement, coming out here, hearing what we're all about, because these elections are very important. Shorewood has a lot of really big projects around the corner. For one, as Chair of the DBW, I've been, you know, just eating and sleeping DBW projects for the last, you know, two years. One big project that we're working on, that I work daily on, is our DBW facility. The current facility is failing. We are unable to attract staff, and there is a safety hazard there, and it's an inefficient piece of land. So I really appreciate you guys all being here today to listen to us and to engage with us. And if you have any more questions outside of this, I, you know, urge you to go to arthurforshorewood.com, and you can find out more about my priorities and figure out how to help support my campaign. Thank you.
Now we will move to your questions submitted by the Shorewood community. The sign will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining, fifteen seconds time, you must stop. This is short, this is only one and a half minutes, so I just want the audience to... Do you know that this is short? So we will start, because of the way we started the location, we will start with Sam with the first question. If elected, the question is, if elected, what are your top priorities for Shorewood in the short and long term?
Yeah, my top priorities for Shorewood in this, in the short term is ensuring that we have a policy of development that is in line with the values of this community, which means, I think, in the course of the case of Shorewood, that we need to engage with our partners and people that we're doing tax and criminal financing with, you know, developers who are doing rental properties, multi-unit properties, in ways that ensure that we are getting, you know, quality housing, affordable housing, ways in which if we're engaging with employers, that we're not in a situation where we get saddled with an employer like Kroger's who is at four-class action lawsuits about wage theft, that we are engaging with them in ways that hold them accountable for providing good jobs and good salaries to their employees. Long term, you know, what I want to see is a community that is integrated with Milwaukee as a whole, that is Milwaukee area as a whole, that is a partner to the surrounding municipalities and the city as a whole, and that's inviting to all of the...
We'll wait for the timer. You may take your one and a half minutes to speak. Ready? Okay. So Arthur, you...
Yeah, so top priority, long term, short term. You know, we have an incredible amount of aging infrastructure on our hands, and it's all coming together right now as we speak. And it is the most critical thing our village needs to look at. It's the most critical issue that our village needs to look at now and for the future. I think my time as a trustee, I'm trying to engage, I'm trying to work with staff, and I followed orders here to engage what ten years of how it looks like. I'm not trying to think about tomorrow. And I know in the world we live in, we like to think, you know, I want these things done tomorrow, but I'm trying to look ten years from now. And I'm really trying to set this village up for success. And our infrastructure is at a very critical stage right now. We've got streetlights that are failing, we've got a DBW that is also failing. And we have all, you know, we are going through a process of removing and replacing lead laterals. Our North Oakland Avenue, if you've ever been on North Oakland Avenue, if I've biked yourself, that bike to Oakland Avenue, it's dangerous. And then you're finally finishing the southeast combined sewer replacement. So that is a big win for our community right now, but DBW is probably my absolute top priority at this moment, followed by, you know, at the same time, we're going to be working on street lighting. Those are two big, big, important projects that we are looking at right now, and I'm really excited. And again, if you guys, anybody out here has more questions about this and wants to get ahold of me, please, this is my website, just send me an email, let's talk more about keeping up your street lighting.
For a short-term priority, I would have to say residential street lighting moved to the top really fast. It seems to me that we have sort of, the system has failed faster than anyone can foresee it happening. And it's a time to pivot, sort of like when my basement flooded in 2010. I was grateful then that the village board moved the sewer system improvements to the top of the list. So that would be, that would be important to me to move to the top. Other things, of course, finishing things, the sewers and the lead laterals. A second, another one would be to improve communications. And this is a tough one because it's an interesting marketplace. There's, you know, so many different people are reached in so many different ways. But we just have to keep trying and trying to use it, it's different technology. Keep using postcards. I know there's a lot of people that, there's several people that are still not online. And so I think that's something we have to do too. I have been in favor of moving to the digitization of as many village documents as we can. We need to, we've got, we're looking for contracts to digitize the minutes and ordinances, resolutions, and also building permits. And one other part, I can't remember, there's another... Oh, anyway, we wanted to improve the village website, thank you.
We are now going to move to question three. Okay. We are now moving to question two, and Arthur, you begin this one. How do you balance your philosophy regarding new development with resident concerns about parking and green space?
Fantastic question. I think development is the most, we see the most engagement village-wide over development. We see it online, we see it residents coming to our, into village hall, and people are very emotional about development in Shorewood. It's a very big topic. I've been on the CDA now for a year, and I've been working through a big topic we've been talking about is also affordable housing. We are trying to balance how we can grow this village and grow our tax base without, you know, without really upsetting a lot of our residents that have been here for so long. You know, a goal, you know, what I, my philosophy is, we need to build spaces where our seniors can age in Shorewood, and we can open up housing stock for younger families. Those kids can go to our schools. Our schools are seeing a real deficit in children. And my goal is to really support the schools by supporting development, by getting children, more children in our district into the schools, allowing families, younger families to come and buy housing stock. And we really want to encourage seniors to stay in Shorewood, and that's really been a goal, but it's hard because you've got smaller groups of people that are very emotional, and we've got to make big decisions to the entire community. There is a very silent majority of people out there that are, that can look at the whole picture. So it's very difficult to say no or say or vote yes on a certain item when you have, when you have it stopped.
Well, hopefully, the update of the commercial zoning code will help us with this problem. It was a long process, I was part of the internal working group. So this new zoning code for the commercial corridor dictates an amount of green space. It will, it's based on a form-based model, so it will go to a lot towards the way a building looks. So it will also dictate how far the building can be set back from the curb. It will dictate what kind of materials can be used on the storefront. I think we're limiting it to brick and stone. It will also dictate something called a step back, step back, step back. Okay, step back, I think, is on the top floor. So in some areas, that top floor, to make the building look less bulky, will have to be set back. You'll see that, I think, on the cornerstone, there's that approach. And so hopefully, this form-based zoning update will solve a lot of the problems that we've seen before, and it'll take a lot of the wiggle room out. I think we're developers, we try to negotiate. We've got a new code, it is what it is, and there's not going to be... It's supposed to be much more stringent, there won't be an appeals process that's as liberal because the code is very specific.
Those are rotating, Kathy, you're gonna have to come up to the next one.
Do I, I think I get to go here, right?
No, you don't, Sam.
Okay, fair enough.
Sam, Arthur, and then Kathy.
I think, I think...
You didn't get to answer.
You didn't get to answer. Oh, Sam, I'm so sorry, thank you for correcting me, thank you, thank you. Go ahead, Sam.
Oh, please, don't worry about it, no. No, I mean, you know, as a village, we have limited authority over how we structure life in this village. One of the ways we can do that is through zoning, which we've done, we've gone through a big effort to do, to do a, this is a wrong part, to do a new zoning code. We have our illiterate authority in a number of places, and we also have the ability to do tax incremental financing to develop and to do new developments. I think that one of the things we want to do is ensure that when we do, when we engage in these partnerships, when we have leverage over developments throughout the city, that we use those, that authority to really ensure that the partners we're bringing into Shorewood are doing things in ways that the community is comfortable with, right? And so I mean, primarily that we're following the values of this community, you know, the values of equity, values of ensuring that people have good jobs, and, you know, that the tenants of this community are going to be, are going to live in quality housing. And we have seen situations in the past where out of goodwill, there may not have been as many restrictions in these agreements as it could have been. And as a result of that, we've seen, you know, we've seen behaviors on the part of, on the parts of various corporate partners that wouldn't be fitting with the values of the community. And I think ideally, right, we want to make sure that we're fully using our authority to shape this community the way that we want to. In terms of parking, I will just say we should be data-driven on that front and practically respond to the concerns of people on the basis of what looks up.
I'm sorry, again, Sam. So question three, we'll begin with Kathy. This is the question, can I have it in hearing? Yeah, okay. Our DBW site is aging. Should the village relocate the DW? And if so, what do you think should be done with the current DW yard and buildings?
I'm open to all options on the public works site. We, at this point, I think we're looking at three off-site locations in River West and also seeing where it is. I guess one of the concerns I have is I just want to know what the numbers are. I mean, I think there was a problem with the fire, the old fire police station, keeping it as a fire station. I think it was a treasure that was saved, and I'm personally extremely grateful, and I think many people are. And it seems to me, if I recall correctly, they had to go out for a bit a second time to find a contractor that would work with them and make it happen. And so I think that's sort of what we have to do with the public works site. If we're not happy with the answers we're getting and the numbers we're getting, we need to go back and keep trying, whether it's River West or whether it's in the village. I think there could be a lot of potential for that site. I know it's been mentioned as an affordable housing spot, possibly like a pocket neighborhood. Sounds good, I need to see the numbers. I think you also have to consider the price that the village will pay for having a public works outside of the village. I want to know what's the payment in lieu of taxes. That's obviously a cost that we're going to have in perpetuity if we move it. Can we generate some revenue? If we move it to River West, can we find a way to generate some revenue to offset the property taxes or the payment in lieu of taxes that we'll be paying because it won't be in our village? I, my mind is open to all options, I just need numbers.
Okay, Sam?
Yeah, I would say the same thing. I mean, we're stewards of the public first here, and we want to make sure that when we're considering these various options, we're doing things that are cost-effective. There are other considerations, however, right? I mean, I think, all things being equal, we want a location that is centralized, and we want a location in Shorewood, if that's usable. We should also consider where the employees are at on this front, simply because so most employees are highly skilled, and if we're forcing them to work outside of Shorewood, that's not something they want. That's going to make it harder and harder to hire. We struggle with that already with some mechanics and some people who are highly skilled. So I want to make sure on that front that we're considering the interests of the employees, that we're considering what they need as well. Again, though, that, all that being equal, right? We should consider all possible options. If it makes so much financial sense that we locate offsite, that we locate in Milwaukee or wherever the other sites are, if it makes sense to split up the site within Shorewood, that is also proposed, we should consider that. That will, obviously, all of those things will come in various pluses and minuses, but at the end of the day, I think it's, we really just have to have a look at it. This is an issue that I think about every single day. I talk to, I probably talk to at least two to three people a day at Great Line about this particular project. And I differ slightly here from my colleagues, is I am firmly in the camp that I believe DBW needs to move out this current space. We've outgrown this space, this space has been there for a hundred years, and now we are having staff, staff heads and current employees saying that this space is not efficient for us, to the point where it's actually dangerous. We, modern-day DBW facilities, you can imagine, life has changed over a hundred years on how we tackle services in our village. We have outgrown that space by at least three acres. Our current firm has found three viable spaces, at least a mile from the current space right now. If we are able to rebuild the DBW space outside of Shorewood, keeping the transfer station, continue to work with Whitefish Bay, we can also bring in Milwaukee, potentially work with Milwaukee. But I want you guys to reimagine what that space could be where DBW is right now. It could be, it is the most beautiful piece of land that Shorewood has. It's three acres on a bike trail, next to the river. And just imagine, I want you guys all just to think, what are the possibilities? I'm full in favor of historic preservation of those spaces, and if we keep on that space, we're going to have to tear those buildings down. So if you love those buildings and you want to stay on that space, that's going to be very hard to accomplish.
We're now at question four. Sam, we'll begin with you. Here's the question. Aging... Turn your microphone on. What? Oh, the mic. Is it better? Okay, sorry. Aging infrastructures such as streetlights, sewers, aqua beach grounds, and alley repair are issues in our village. How would you prioritize... How would you prioritize these and other projects and finance them? I think it's. Sam.
Yeah, no. Can you repeat the list of things?
Sure. It starts with streetlights, sewers, add more to beach groins, and alley repair are issues.
However, I suppose, I think the ongoing sewer projects are things that obviously have to be rectified. Of course, we're already in the process of working through those things. I would say that that would be, you know, very core to, you know, the quality of life in the area. Replacing that infrastructure is obviously incumbent upon us. I would say also, though, that in terms of, in terms of streetlights, it is getting observed that the number of times streetlights go out, the fact that this is amongst many people, a very large public safety concern, that is something we have to rectify as soon as possible. I would only say that when we do rectify that, we want to make sure that infrastructure is sustainable and is up to date as possible so that we don't have to replace it again down the line, right? This is something where we want to be engaged in addressing issues of sustainability and climate change immediately at this moment. And again, I would say, you know, we will have to, we'll obviously have to issue bonds to do some of these larger projects. So that's, the financing, that would be, I mean. Could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure, I'll read it again. I'll read the whole thing.
Thank you.
Aging infrastructure such as. Aging infrastructure such as streetlights, sewers, aqua beach groins, and alley repair are issues in our village. How would you prioritize these and other projects and finance them?
Thank you. You know, I think on top of that list, we have North Oakland Avenue. We have a big project coming up with Lake Drive with Wistat coming up, you know, going to be redoing our Lake Drive in 2025. North Oakland Avenue is 2026. We're currently working on sewers right now with the completion date of that southeast combined sewer next year, which is very exciting. That was a very, very big project for the community, and I'm just really excited. I can never believe that I would have been this excited about sewers, but I'm very excited that these sewers are finally going to be fixed. And I think looking at, you know, the DBW facility, which is just a huge, huge one coming in, as well as street lighting, these are projects that we're going to have to work on in conjunction with each other. We can't pick a one or the other. We can't prioritize one over the other. They all need to be done. You know, we talked about trying to save money in this community through taxes. We can't be putting off large infrastructure projects because what happens year after year is those costs triple, quadruple in a month. We have to, we have to really take a serious look at ourselves and say, we have to do these projects, we have to commit to these projects, and do them now before these projects are, you know, 10 times the amount of what they could have been, if we would have just done them right away. So I think we have to take a holistic approach and continue to sort of work through and do all these projects that are coming up here in the next three, four, or five years.
Kathy, do you want me to repeat it or is it?
Yeah, you got it. Okay. You ready? Okay. Go ahead. Well, we do have to prioritize because we can't do everything at once, and I'm concerned about the debt load in the village, and so for that reason, we have to prioritize. First of all, the alleys are already on the pavement replacement plan, and so I think that alternates every other year with road replacements anyway. It's already built in. But we do have to finish what we started, so that would be sewers and the southeast quadrant and the lead lateral replacement. Then after that, I would put streetlights right at the top, just for public safety. And then after that, I would sadly, but the groins at Atwater, I don't think I've even seen a number for that. It's needed, and it would be a great improvement, but I don't see us working on that in the 10-year plan. And the long-range financial plan is a rolling 10-year plan, and it's not there now, and I don't see it being there soon.
A lot of people, I'm sorry, excuse me, a lot of people are going to what? The Atwater?
Yeah.
The groins, I'm sorry. So the groins are, the decaying infrastructure that basically keeps the sand on the beach.
Got it.
And so at this point, it's a lot of concrete and exposed rebar.
Thank you. Would you like to do that? I didn't know what they were either, that's why you told me, so now I know. Thank you for asking. Okay. And timer, is she finished? Okay. So question number five goes to you, Arthur, first, and let me read it. What are your thoughts on future street reconstruction and modifications such as eliminating parking, traffic calming measures, complete streets, and bike lanes in the village? Does that mean completed streets?
No, no, complete streets is actually a term that's used for the layout of a street. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, this is also something I work on. You know, these are great questions. I work on all this stuff every day, and nobody ever wants to talk to me about it. I'm like, oh, I try to talk to my wife about complete streets, and she couldn't care less. So I'm so glad you guys are all here, I get to talk about complete streets. I was on a, you know, a work committee for North Oakland Avenue, and, you know, we are right now, you know, we've been spending the last year kind of going through different design phases. So things that I look at when I come to the table is I want to see green infrastructure. Where does it make sense? How can it be effective? As well as traffic calming, what's going to help walkability, what's going to help our seniors in our business district? That is a big, those are big topics for me, and anytime we need about transport, we need about street replacement, those are the things that I'm constantly talking to. We had our director of DBW, to the point now, she always, she comes back with just green infrastructure right off the top. She just says, here are the possibilities. Sometimes it doesn't work, but so North Oakland Avenue, we are going to be creating, there's going to be a lot more bump ups as you get, you know, as you go with North Oakland Avenue, a lot more bump ups, a lot more visibility with our bike lanes. And, you know, I think throughout the village, with people like Sammy Middleton and our Parks Committee, we're really, our Bike Safety Committees, we're really looking at more opportunities for bike safety and biking in Shorewood. I think we all see a value in trying to get away from driving, parking, and support more of those, you know, the different sort of forms of transportation such as biking and other things.
I think, Kathy, I think you.
As an avid bicyclist and investor in Shorewood, this is, this is an important issue. I think one of the things that has been great to see is the way we have started to look at putting together pieces of a puzzle. The Vision 2025 Plan talks about looking at an intermodal transportation model, and I think one of the things to think about is not just, you know, the goal is not to have a dedicated bike on every street, bike lane on every street, but to have them connected so that you can navigate through the village. I mean, it'd be great to have a crossing guard at every crosswalk, but we can't afford that. And I think it's sort of similar with the bike lanes. So let's figure out where we can put them that they'll do the most good. For example, I think on Downer Avenue, we're looking now at putting dedicated bike lanes on each side. So that's a street that has a bus system, and it doesn't have a whole lot of driveways. It has a few, but not a lot. And so it seems to me that someone who's commuting could take the bus all the way to Downer and then get on their bike and then finish their commute home. So I think that's one of the important things we need to think about, is instead of thinking, I want everything on every street, or can we be strategic and put the pieces together so that we can use more methods of intermodal transportation and have fewer people in their cars? I personally like leaving my car in the garage as much as possible. That's it, thank you.
Good to go. Okay.
Yeah.
No, I can use my body, I love it. It's, Shorewood is such a liberal community because of access to the Oakley Trail. Going across Michigan gives more feathers, not ideal, but the first half of that journey is wonderful. I'm highly in favor of building out, building out bypass and also building out public transportation. In the short term, however, one thing we want to keep in mind is, and this is something when I go indoors, and I've knocked about 2,000 doors so far, when I talk to people, the number one issue they bring up is parking, right? And it comes in myriad forms. Some people are worried about too much about density of parking. When I talk to renters, they're talking about the cost of parking. But the reality is, for the time being, that commuting is still necessary, and we can't, and if we want to, if we want to, you know, kind of cut down on the amount of parking we need for this village, it's going to cost, it's going to require us addressing issues of public transportation, making sure that people have access to buses, making sure that the frequency of buses are going to allow for people to actually commute to work in time and matter. And, you know, and also be able to take connect those buses to bike lanes where people can, you know, whatever, be halfway to take a bus. So I would say, you know, I think we all share that goal of having as green a transportation system as possible. I think in the short term, we need to be very cognizant of the needs that people have in terms of commuting and power.
We're now at question six. We are now at question six. And Kathy, you've been on this one, so here it is. The village and its community development authority have made affordable housing a priority. Yet the CDA has earmarked, but not spent, 2.0 million for affordable housing. How do you think this money should be used? End speaker.
I've been on the CDA for three years, and it's been an interesting learning experience. Some of the things that we, sort of new to me, that I think previous trustees realized also was, there is affordable housing in the village, but one of the problems is people with incomes above, higher levels of income are living in the affordable units. But that's the way the pre-market system works, right? You're getting a great deal, why we can't make a move, right? So one of the things that we've done in the village on the CDA is looked at a rental offensive approach, which would be trying to get more people into affordable rental units. The problem there is there's not a lot of landlords that want to go through it because it's, it's a burden. It's for them, they're like, why should I participate in something when someone's going to come through and inspect my apartment and pick it apart? So that's an issue. But we were talking with most recently, the CDA was possibly, there are two options. We could use a public works site, possibly, or a pocket neighborhood, or we could go vertically, but the village doesn't control that spot, the spot on the southeast corner of Oakland and Capitol. There's some open space there, you could go vertically. The question is, we need to find partners to do it with because we're really too small to do it on our own, so we hope to work with the county.
My next.
Yeah, just waiting for the timer.
Okay, okay, all right.
Sorry, Sam, go ahead.
No, I mean, the problem right there is, right, $2 million, is that sufficient for a long-term project to offer affordable housing to people? I think the key there is, right, you know, you can't use that $2 million directly for rental assistance, you can't use it directly for to subsidize people's housing. There has to be some sort of way to leverage that $2 million to create infrastructure whereby we can partner with somebody who's willing to offer affordable units going forward. The one thing I would say is that if we are entering into an agreement with a private developer who's going to be building these structures, we have to ensure that contractual language holds some account for maintaining that affordable housing in the future, and that even if a sale happens, that affordable housing carries with it. Right, again, this is something that we're going to have to leverage, have to build infrastructure. It's not going to be sufficient for us to offer direct assistance to people, and that just won't last long enough to build a new construction file. You know, I find this conversation very, very fascinating. You know, through the CDA, through talking to residents, you know, we have, I thought it was 2.5 million, and we have, my efforts, so we closed.
That might be true.
We closed it, we closed it, did 2.5. We want to close the difference. So we closed, we closed, did one, and we were able to extend it for one year, and then from extending that one year, we had 2.5 million, 2.2 million to utilize for affordable housing. There were a lot of criticism from the board of, why haven't you acted on that? Why haven't you spent that money? It's mainly because we're taking this issue very seriously, and there's not a lot of good options right now, there's not a lot of answers. And the last thing that I want to do is throw money at an issue when we don't have all the answers and we don't know where we're going yet. And I still think we have a board that maybe is a little divided, and I should say, CDA because it really hasn't come to the fore yet, but maybe the board's divided as well. What's the most effective use of this money? Is it rental offensive? Is it homeownership? I mean, personally, for me, if we want to help people of low income come to this village, homeownership, to me, makes the most sense so they can help develop, we can help them with building equity and creating sort of a better life instead of constantly just struggling with affordable housing. But I'm still learning so much about this topic. I learn everything I can through the CDA means, through my own research. I do think it's an important issue for our village, but I also think the village, after researching, we have a lot of opportunities in Shorewood for affordable housing as it is. And from the last conversation at CDA, one of our biggest opportunities is growing higher in the village if we want to create more affordable housing, and I don't think it's active.
I wish I could, the last question, so that I vote, you choose which one you want answered, because I'm afraid we're going to have room for one more question before we go into closing statements. So if it's all right with everybody, I'm just going to take number seven, because that's what's on of this. And this will start with you, Sam. So number seven. How do you see the role of the Shorewood Police Department in our community? And how can the village board work with the SPP to maintain high levels of public safety while serving a diverse community and protecting vulnerable populations?
This is, this issue has come up over and over again for me indoors as well. People are worried about public safety, you know, like a neighbor had a car broken, you know, this is something they're concerned with. I want to state, you know, first of all, that I think that the best approach to really addressing public safety is an approach that addresses the causes of crime in the first place. And that means, you know, I mean, in this age of austerity in which we live, sadly, what's occurred is that sometimes the only interaction people have with government is through the police, right? And all other services and opportunities for people to acquire help have disappeared, and police are going to be the only thing that's left over. We need to really address issues at a structural level by really focusing on promoting other types of professionals that can intervene in non-acute situations to de-escalate issues, to de-escalate problems, things like social workers, things like mental health professionals, AODA services, et cetera, right? In terms of, in terms of other issues that come up around public safety, things like repatriating, we need to, we need to take engineering, structural, you know, kind of structural approaches to that that allow for people to, you know, allow, you know, to quell traffic and stop those, so stop those fears really, really coming about and manifesting. And with that, right, I thought I saw Sam. I'd like to start off by heaving a lot of praise onto our chief of police, Heather Worth, as well as the department and the officers. I've taken the time to get to know a lot of these officers on our staff, and they're all just very, very credible people. They all care about our community, they're very engaged in the community. You know, and I think last time I took a walking tour with Officer Miller, which, by the way, Officer Miller's nephew is, just got signed with the Brewers, Owen Miller, his nephew is on the Brewers. Anyways, we took a walking tour of the community, and a lot of what he was talking about was he did not, he felt that the community was against the police department, and their morale was very low today. And it was, it was really hard to hear, you know, we're, obviously, we're coming off social unrest, but I think you have a department that's really trying to work with our community and the philosophy of our community. You know, so I say, you know, one thing that I've asked them to do is be present in the community more frequently. Come to the farmer's market, come to our events. You know, Heather Worth was just, you know, Chief Worth was just skating at the show the other week. You know, I think it's very important that they make themselves known in the community. Things that I think we can also, as residents, do to help them because they can't be everywhere at once, and the village is working on street lighting as it's street lighting right now. But I think things that people can do are residential lighting, really improve the residential lighting on their homes, as well as look at green cameras. Green cameras for us, like a week after I installed it, I caught somebody try and break in my car, sent the video to the police, the man was hot and rested, done, blocked. So, thank you.
So I've been on the public safety committee for three years, and in that role, I was able to sit on the search committee that found a consultant that did a police organizational study. And it's been interesting to see how the department has progressed since we did that study. We, I do, I agree with the hiring that we've done. We're looking, actively seeking minorities to work in our Um, we're looking, you know, actively seeking minorities to work in our police department. It's just, right now, it's a tough time to find police officers. Um, I also support the current staffing level. It has gone down. It was, um, we had 31 full-time equivalents in 2014, and we're at 28.5 right now. So, so our police, our staffing has gone down, but I think, I think we're doing pretty good with what we've got. It's difficult to find a balance. You, you don't want to overpolice, but you also want everyone to feel safe in the community. I applaud the, the hiring of Chief Worth also. I also applaud the transparency that we've improved on the website. We have monthly reports that show everything from arrests to, um, traffic citations, and there's also, um, a weekly, let's see, we have a, a monthly activity report. There's a complaint form, and then you can even see all the calls that the police get. They're online also on the website. So I think those are valuable improvements we've added. It's a, a move for a better community policing.
My boss just told me we had time for one more question.
Yes.
It's been a double home monitor. Okay, this is question eight, and this is close to you off at first. Shorewood is composed of more renters than homeowners. Do you see a place in Shorewood for people on fixed incomes, renters, and young families? If so, how do we make Shorewood an affordable, inclusive village in which people can afford to rent, pocket car, buy a first home, and retire?
Wow, that's a question. No, no, I have a steady question. There's room in this village for everybody. This is, you know, I, I'm a very competitive person. I, you know, I coach Little League, I coach hockey, and, and, uh, competition is in my soul, and I really strive to make this the best community for everybody, both renters and, and homeowners. Uh, it's vital, as Kathy said before, it's vital for us to figure out how to communicate better, how to reach out to more people in this village, and how to, you know, how to get a hold of, of the renters. Because a renter, the renters are essentially 50% of this community, and their voice is very, very important. And I, you know, and I get a lot of feedback from, you know, we just passed a huge parking, you know, um, overhaul. And I, and we get a lot of feedback that that is, uh, very difficult for certain renters. So I think us as a Village Board are very flexible. If, if there are issues, there are blind spots that we have, there are things that aren't working for people, we want to hear it because we have a board right now that is very flexible and willing to work with, with you on these issues. Um, so, so I would encourage you just to always, you know, find my email address, trusteeersink@shorewoodwi.gov. Send me an email, and we can have that conversation because I think there's a lot of opportunities for renters to have a more of a seat at the table. There's, there's one renter that I know in particular. His name is Andrew Patrol. He worked, he lives in the Light Horse. He's an infectious disease specialist. And he's volunteered for the Shorewood Farmers Market, which I help run, and he's become president of the Farmers Market. There is room for everybody in this community at all tables that we have.
Kathy, yes.
Okay, so affordable means money. Um, I guess this is where, um, my position on the budget and finance committee comes into play. There's, there's, it's just like your budget at home, you know? You've got the wish list, and you have to make choices. And I think one thing that I'm proud of is that for the last, since I've been on the board, we've kept the tax levy pretty flat with the exception of this last year. And you didn't notice it that much on your bill because we had a TID 1 close, and so there was a windfall. But I think this really relates not just to people who own their own homes, but it also relates to the renters because someone has to pay taxes on that property too. And I, so in 2021, the, the tax levy increase for the village was .98. 2022, it was .93, and as I said, last, this current year is just, just about 4%. And so I think you really have to keep an eye on, um, what do we have to do right now? What can we possibly delay for a year? Or how can we do something differently? Um, I'm always amazed at the creativity and the innovation of residents when I walk and I meet people. And I, it's, I think it's a, a real resource that we can use, and I hope we do more of it in the future.
Okay, Sam?
Yeah, no, I, um, I think, you know, considering the interests of renters in this community is, is, is a paramount importance. Again, they make up about half of the population of Shorewood, even though we consider ourselves a, a kind of city or a, a sort of village of, uh, of, you know, single-family homes. The, um, uh, one of the things I want to point out is that we had a story in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel recently, talking about the plight of the people right over there at the Villager, uh, where they had for over a year their, uh, their elevator going in and out, uh, sometimes trapping elderly people without the capacity to, uh, you know, use stairs in their home, including over the holidays. Um, we need to be able to find ways to, to, uh, to, 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 as a community, do the work of maintaining and ensuring that, uh, that developers and, and people, uh, people who own apartment buildings in this town are maintaining their quality. Um, their job is to go out there and make a profit. And that's, uh, that's understandable. We're going to see that, we're, we're going to see people maximizing profits at the owners' facilities. If we want, if we want to ensure that we have quality housing for renters that's incumbent on the village to really, uh, to really deliver on, um, uh, on some regulations, that, that whole decision was accountable for providing a quality housing. Um, and I'll leave it at that.
We are now at, um, two minutes for the candidates' closing remarks. And we will begin with who would have started. No one can hear me. Okay. We now have two minutes for the closing remarks. And we will start as, um, with the person who would have gotten the next question first, which is Kathy. So timer, you know, it's two minutes.
Thank you to everyone who took time out of their weekend to attend this event, and thank you to Sam and Arthur for entering this race. The village is better served when residents have a choice at the polls. I would also like, like to thank my personal Chief of Staff and husband Keith, if he's still in the back row. My family and I moved to Shorewood 25 years ago this month for proximity to downtown work and for access to the public schools. I soon realized we had found much more than location and education. This community is a tree-lined treasure situated between two significant natural resources, Lake Michigan and Milwaukee River. I am seeking another term to give back to Shorewood as it faces the challenges of maintaining services and infrastructure while facing serious funding issues. Shorewood has a relatively high property tax burden. This deters young families from coming here and forces many retired people to leave, discouraging the diversity that we, we desire. While we enjoy a high level of services, we need to remain vigilant on expenses and spending, as I have done these last three years. As a former journalist, my skill setting includes listening, observing, and questioning. I approach issues from an independent viewpoint, seeking various perspectives to be more well-informed. I am also committed to transparency and open government. These skills are critical to meet this funding challenge because if residents are uninformed, confused, or uncertain about how their tax dollars are being spent, then the integrity of their local government will be called into question. As I speak to residents, I find the questions about taxes and quality of life are top concerns. To address these issues, I bring to the table years of professional experience in journalism and translation, and three years of experience as an official. I understand the need to seek input, use data, collaborate, and critique these or consult with reports to ensure that all recommendations will apply to our community. This decision-making process helps me to be a diligent steward of village resources. I hope you'll support me. Thank you.
Sam?
First of all, uh, thank you to everyone who came out here on a beautiful Sunday and we looked at it outside. The fact that, the fact that you guys are all here today to listen to us, uh, you know, lobiate is, is, is a real testament to the level of civic engagement we have in this, in this village. Uh, and thank you to lead women voters for setting this up. This has been, uh, it's been a great time for me. I really appreciate you guys taking the time. Um, my wife and I moved here, uh, you know, I remember, I remember driving up here. My wife sold me on this by, uh, you know, biking, taking us on a bike ride up to Atwater Park, rolling on a blanket at, uh, at, at Atwater, uh, looking out over, looking out over Lake Michigan, and we fell in love with this place and, and have not fallen out of love since then. We've been here 11 years, have older children here, uh, our children are going to school here. We love the quality of life, the walkability, right? The, the intelligence of the residents, the skills that they bring to the, bring to the table. Again, like, this, this is a testament to here today, the level of civic engagement that, that we see. Um, we need to mobilize these skills, right? Because we do face real crises, not only in the village, but in the state as a whole, uh, to really, to really deepen our, our commitment to democracy, to deepen our, our ability to, to, uh, to make this community what we all want it to be. Um, I, I believe that I have the skills to really, uh, to truly help bring that to fruition. 15 years in government service, working, uh, working, uh, under, under governors, uh, federal cabinet secretaries, uh, in, in numerous other capacities, working in both budget and as a policy analyst and, and, uh, and in government performance. Um, I, um, I think that I have the skills to, to ensure that, uh, that we, we capitalize on, on, on the capacities of this, of this village, that we, uh, we become, we become a community that fully does live its values. And that, um, that as we do so, we become not only, uh, you know, kind of like, you know, a better Shorewood, but then we act as a catalyst. Any, any examples of communities around us? Thank you.
Um, as I look out here, I see a lot of friends. I see a lot of colleagues. I see neighbors, and I see a lot of people I've disagreed with on Facebook. And let me tell you that I represent everybody here. Um, I've tried, whether we agree or don't agree, I've tried to build bridges, and I've tried to build consensus. Um, I have no lack of passion for this community. I have this, I have no lack of passion for PBW. Um, I bring everything that I have to the table. Um, in my day job, I produce a television show called Wisconsin Foodies, a PBS show, and we travel the state, and we tell these incredible stories of small businesses, restaurants, food producers, cheesemakers. And I've developed such a wonderful relationship with a lot of business owners. And a lot of the, and, and a lot of that, I try to bring back to the community. A lot that I learned, I bring back to the community. I don't have a passion for politics. I, I help coach Little League. I, I'm on Ice Captain at the Lakeville Ice Ring. I, you know, I coach my son's hockey team, which we have two games right now, the last two games of the season, and, uh, they're going to be mad that I'm not there, but you guys are way more important than youth ice hockey. Um, but, but I just, you know, I, I just want to say thank you, you know, for, for allowing me to serve these past three years. I've learned a lot. I've grown a lot. Um, like I said, I'm not a true politician. I'm just somebody that really cares for our community, and cares for the people of our community. I see it every day in all of my interactions. There's such a level of engagement in Shorewood, and it, and it's just so inspiring. And I try to take that inspiration from the people that I see every day, and I use it on the Village Board. I might not be the most polished. I might get a little frustrated when people come in to the Village Board and they get a little testy with me, you know, that, but, but I am who I am. You know, this, this is what I'm here to do. I'm not trying to run for other politics. I'm trying to run for Shorewood. And I'm trying to, to represent everybody here, regardless if we do agree or don't agree. And one minute and 30 seconds is not nearly enough to talk about, time to talk about any of these subjects. So please, please, please reach out to me. Uh, you can go to my website, arthurforshorewood.com. I'd love to go to coffee with you. I'd love to hang out with you. I've got three yard signs over there if you'd like one. That's it.
Um, that concludes, that concludes the candidate forum for Shorewood Trustee. On behalf of the Shorewood Women's Club and the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County, thank you to the community for your questions, and thank you to our candidates for participating. And being short, for participating in the forum and running for a position on the, on the Shorewood Village Board of Trustees. Thank you to each of you. Arthur Ersink, Sam Hashman, and Kathy Stogren. A recording of tonight's, today's forum will be posted to the Shorewood Women's Club YouTube channel as well as to voterfor11.org. As a reminder, the election will be held April 4th. Information on voting and elections can be found on VoteFor11 and the LWVMC website at myvotewisconsin.com. After March 15th, please visit votefor11.org website to view your sample ballot, information on your candidates, and detailed question and answer section. I just have to say, this is off paper, is that there are going to be four questions, if not five, for one X1 for Shorewood on the ballot. And it is really critical that you read the sample ballot for the language of those four questions and be prepared on Election Day to answer them. That's God's fortuitous thing. Okay. Polls are open April 4th from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And with proper documentation, you may still register when you go to vote. You may also vote in person, absentee at the village hall. In-person absentee voting is held the two weeks prior to every election, excluding weekends. Hours are 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Except the last day, the hours are 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM, the half hour. Okay. The League of Women Voters reminds you that our democracy depends on citizen involvement. I trust that you intend to vote on Election Day, April 4th, and I hope that you will help increase voter turnout by encouraging friends to vote and taking those who can't get to the polls that you're close to, taking them to the polls. Thank you so much.